The December 16th, 2019 San Carlos Planning Commission meeting to order. We always start with a pledge of allegiance to our great flag and country. I invite you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, everyone. Lisa, could we please have the commissioner roll call?
Yes, through the chair and to the commissioners in public this evening. Commissioner Don Bradley is absent. I just wanted to mention that for the record. Commissioner Roof?
Present.
Commissioner Garvey?
Present.
Vice Chair Yakapony?
Present.
Chair Dugan?
Here.
Terrific. If anyone here this evening plans to speak on a topic, you will need to fill out a speaker card in the back corner, and then you'll be invited to provide public comment. All speakers must come forward to the microphone for the benefit of everyone who may view the recording of tonight's proceedings. We will now open up the floor for general public comment. Public comment is limited to items not on tonight's agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed during public comment. However, our general policy is to refer such items to staff for further attention or to have a matter placed on a future agenda for public hearing. I do not have any speaker cards at this time for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak for public comment? Okay. We'll move on to Agenda Item 5, which is approval of the minutes of the November 18th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments over those minutes?
None.
Terrific. I would entertain a motion to approve such minutes.
I move to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
I'll second that.
And before we do the vote, Lisa, I was not present at that meeting, so should I abstain?
All right. Terrific. We'll take a roll call for this.
I'll pass Commissioner Roof, who will be abstaining this evening. Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Yakapony?
Yes.
And Chair Dugan?
Yes.
Terrific. We'll move on now to public hearing. And we have one item on tonight's agenda concerning a pole sign, a wall sign, and a window for a public storage facility at 375 Shoreway Road. Staff, do we have a presentation this evening?
We do. I will. My name is Kevin Berry, Assistant Planner. I will be presenting this application, a request for design review approval for one, for three new signs for the public storage facility at 375 Shoreway Road. The site at 375 Shoreway Road is approximately three acres in area and is located between Shoreway Road and the city of Redwood City. The site is zoned heavy industrial and its general plan land use designation is planned industrial. The site is surrounded by commercial and industrial uses. The current use of the site is a self-storage establishment operated by public storage. The site features multiple storage unit buildings, an onsite rental office, and onsite parking. The applicant, All Signs Services, is requesting design review approval for a total of three new wall, three new signs to serve the public storage facility. One 40-foot-tall internally-illuminated pole sign will identify public storage as the onsite tenant. The applicant has agreed to the condition that illumination of the pole sign is limited to hours between dusk and 1:00 a.m. One wall sign will identify the location of the onsite rental office, and one window sign on the rental office entry door will provide general establishment information. The site plan on the slide shown above shows the location of the proposed signs onsite. The table, the table shown on this slide shows the attributes of each proposed sign. The pole sign features an aluminum cabinet with an orange flex face applied onto the cabinet surface. The other two signs will not be illuminated. The images shown here are elevation views of the proposed pole sign and a rendering of the proposed sign as seen from Shoreway Road. The rendering shows the location of the pole sign in relation to the street. The pole sign is proposed to be located outside the heavy industrial district's minimum 10-foot-required front setback. The images shown here are renderings of the rental office wall sign and the rental office door window sign. The proposed signs fully comply with the maximum allowed number and size of signs as provided in the sign ordinance. The applicant is proposing a total of three signs onsite, which is less than the maximum of five signs allowed for individual tenant occupancies. As shown in the third column of the first row in the table, only one side of the pole sign is counted against the site's allowed signage area in accordance with zoning code section 1822-080 subsection G. The Planning Commission must make the findings listed above in order to grant design review approval. Based on the reasons explained in the staff report, staff recommends that the Planning Commission grants this request for design review approval. All public noticing requirements have been fulfilled, and the department has not received any comments on this application. On the screen is the text of a motion to be used should the commission decide to approve this request for design review approval. Staff is available to answer any questions that you may have, and David Ford of All Signs Services is here to answer any questions you may have about the project. That concludes my presentation.
Terrific. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff?
I had one question. You mentioned that the sign is, the pole sign is internally illuminated. Does that mean there's been power that has to be run to the pole and up the pole? Is that, is that what internally illuminated means?
Internally illuminated, I'm not sure exactly what the power source is. I believe it's hardwired. The applicant may have more information about that. But internally illuminated just refers to the fact that the pole sign will have, the light source for the illumination will be located within the structure and not outside the structure.
I see. I get it. Thank you.
Yes.
I appreciate the, the fact that the sign would be illuminated from dusk and be turned off at 1:00 a.m. because that reduces the lighting of the sky unnecessarily, yet still fulfills the, the business need. Is that, the fact that it gets turned off, is that a condition of the approval, or is it, how is that going to be recorded and remembered going forward?
And thank you for the question, and I apologize if I couldn't, if I don't remember if you were here for the last couple freeway-oriented signs that were presented to the commission. The reason why we included condition number five is because of some of the recent decisions and conditions that were made by the commission for the lift sign that was recently approved, and then again for another public storage sign. I forget the address of that one, but...
It was 145 Shoreway.
Right, so not too far from this sign. So we, we made an assessment that the commission would also like to see this condition applied to this particular application, so it mimics the requirement. This, these conditions are part of the official records for approval, and how we make sure that the conditions are adhered to is essentially we monitor those on a daily basis. For example, for the in-and-out signage, it had a similar condition that the lights be turned on only for a very limited duration. So that's something that part of our staff does. In fact, it's our building division staff that monitors that on a daily basis. So we would be adding in the lift signage as well as the one that was approved recently for public storage, and then if approved, this particular one as well. So these are something that we would check on, and then they, they run with the property for this, for these particular signs. I hope I answered your question.
That helps, that helps a lot. Where in here does it say the...
This is the very last page of the packet, so it's Packet Page 30, and it's condition number five.
Very glad to see that.
And Lisa, as, you know, we did determine our desire to have that sort of limitation on these signs in the last couple signage reviews. Will that, do, like, when the commission comes up with something like that, does that find its way ultimately the next time we open up the code? Like, do you guys track things like that? Like, how does that promulgate into a more official stance than just something we have to look out for each time?
Well, it's, it's been some time since we updated, updated our sign ordinance, but if this is a, a concern, the Planning Commission can certainly forward it, forward it to the city council. We can certainly bring it up with the next zoning ordinance cleanup that we know, and this seems to be our preference here, and we want to adopt it as policy. It's something that we can bring up through a zoning cord, excuse me, a zoning ordinance cleanup, which in fact, we are going to be doing next calendar year. There are a couple of things that we can make more clear. The more we use our code, the more we see opportunities to fine-tune it. So it could be something that we take up in the next calendar year. I would also mention, sort of, it's related to this, but one of the new, I guess, roles that the commission chair will have, the Planning Commission chair will have, has to do with a recent amendment that was done in October from the city council regarding the roles of the commission. And what the city council would like to see on a quarterly basis is a report from the Planning Commission Chair. Now, this would be a report that staff would prepare. We would outline some of the key projects that came forward, any kind of work, study sessions that might have been raised, and then pass it on to the chair. The chair can add anything else, any observations that they want to make, and then they forward that to the city council. So the city council is very much interested, as you might imagine. We had a mini-retreat with the commission that you all attended, so that has been, the comments and concerns from the commission has been, is being forwarded to the council for their consideration. And then likewise, through a quarterly report to the city council, these are other ways that the commission can share its observations, and, and this would be a great example, in fact, to say that, you know, some of these signs are coming forward, and more and more, the commission is concerned about illumination and potential night pollution of the night sky. And so this has been a reoccurring condition, and we think it's important, and we'd like to see that in a code cleanup. So there are a number of ways to do it. We're just starting to kind of see this. So I think your question is important, and if it's going to be the desire of the commission, the city thinks, wants to take up a policy in this regard, that could be something that we share with the council. It's come up for these, these few, these recent few that, that we've brought before you, and certainly it's within the ability to do so. There's precedent for that, so it would just need to be shared in a broader perspective. But that's certainly, certainly something we can include in a report to council that'll be shared with them in January 2020.
Terrific. Yeah, thank you for that. And yes, it was on my, I guess, personal agenda this evening to make sure we're tracking on how that report's coming together, et cetera. So I think this is a good addition to that report. We've certainly cycled it a couple of times. And the, and I'm just curious, so historically, how often has San Carlos had a, you know, refresh of the zoning, or, you know, not solving a specific problem, but sort of, hey, these are the things we, over the last two, three years or what have you, want to clean up now?
Well, those have come forward by topic. So one example, most recently, is an issue over single-family house size. That rose to a lover where it got the council's attention, and the council made it a directive to staff to work on that with the community. Other times, it could be through state mandates. As we all know, there's been a lot of new state laws passed regarding accessory dwelling units, so we'll update the code with respect to that. And then other times, it's staff-initiated where, you know, we recognize that the code isn't as clear, or maybe there may be some minor unintended consequences that we want to fix or close the loop on. And I would say, the code was comprehensively updated in, in the year 2011, and I believe we took forward a couple of code cleanups since then, where we kind of just looked at the whole code and said, what needs to change? Maybe there's some outdated terms, or there needs to be a definition for something. And we probably have done that a couple of times, but we're certainly due for another overall look at the code, tightening up certain sections. So that's on our work program to do for next year, anyway. So it's really, it really depends, I suppose, when the city, what's obvious is when the city goes through a major long-range planning update, say a general plan update. We want to make sure that our zoning is adjusted to support that long-term vision. So since the 2009 general plan update, the zoning ordinance was comprehensively updated in 2011, and then the years following that are really just based upon changes to state law, opportunities where staff saw something that needed to change, and then, of course, a council directive based on a particular community issue like the house size was.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for that historical overview. I wasn't sensitive to that before. Terrific. Kevin, I just had a couple quick questions. First, so there was no existing pole sign here, is that correct?
That is correct. There is no pole sign currently onsite, and it will be completely new.
Okay. And then, and I guess I was a little, so you said that there's, they're requesting three signs, it sounds like three new signs up to, and, and they're allowed a maximum of five. I mean, I assume they have existing signage, right?
That is correct. They have a existing wall sign that they're proposing to remove.
Okay. So they're removing all existing signage, and these are their three new refreshed signs?
That is correct. These will be the only signs onsite.
Okay, got it. And five signs, I guess, that, just, I guess I was surprised by that number. How do we think about that? So any single occupant, you know, if it's like one property and one occupant, there's up to five signs?
That's correct. The zoning code regulates, or has different standards for signage based on the type of occupancy. There are two types of occupancy, individual tenant occupancies and multi-tenant occupancies. In individual tenant occupancy cases, the individual tenants are allowed up to five signs. For example, if there's one tenant onsite. For multi-tenant occupancies, I believe the standard is one sign per tenant.
Okay. And, and just by way of five signage, five signs, so that's like, one on all four sides of the building, and then like a monument sign? Is that, or do they go down and even count like small little like door signs and things like that?
I think that it depends on the case, but typically if graphics and text are associated or closely located with each other, it'd be considered one sign. But door signs and window signs are considered individual signs, so they would be considered. In this case, the window sign on the rental office door has general establishment information, such as hours of operation, accepted methods of payment that the establishment takes. And that entire sign, even though it contains different pieces of information, is regulated as one sign.
I see. Okay, that's why it's five. Okay, very good.
Yeah, just a quick one for me, Kevin. Thank you. The, on Packet Page 22, there's a pylon sign. I'm gathering that the applicant is effectively doing a swap of the low sign for the pole sign. Is that, is that the big picture here? 22, it's existing elevation on the left-hand side.
You're correct. There is a monument sign in front where, in a close location to where the new pole sign will be, in addition to the wall sign that's being removed.
And, and again, the, we're putting up a pole sign instead of the monument sign. That's the general concept?
That is correct. The monument sign, well, I believe it actually, the existing sign that you're referring to is considered a pole sign, the old pole sign. So that will, that's proposed to be removed, and the new 40-foot-tall pole sign will be placed in a nearby location on the property.
Great. Thank you.
Terrific. Would the applicant like to present anything about the signs? They're just open. Terrific. Any questions of the applicant? Terrific. This is a public hearing, so we can hear from the public now. Does anyone here wish to speak on this matter? All right. Can I have a motion to close public hearing on this item?
I move that we close the public hearing.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Ayes have it. Public hearing is closed. Any discussion, commissioners?
I move that the Planning Commission approves the design review application of All Signs Services for one pole sign, one wall sign, and one window sign at 375 Shoreway Road, APN 046081660.
I will second that.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Yakapony?
Yes.
And Chair Dugan?
Yes. All right. Congratulations. Your signs are approved.
All right. That will take us to reports, correspondence, and general information. Lisa, anything for us on this front?
No. What I had planned to mention earlier was just to kind of reiterate some information that I shared via email to the commission, which was about the new request and requirement for the quarterly reports from the Planning Commission Chair to the city council. So I will endeavor to get a draft out to the chair by the end of this week before we go on our break. And then, just, this will, this will be the first time we're doing it, so I think what we can do going forward, if the chair agrees, and we can certainly discuss this with each chair as the chair rotates on this commission, but staff can prepare a draft, circulate it to the chair, the chair can make any final comments, anything else that the chair would like to add, and then we would forward those revisions on to the city clerk. The city clerk passes those to the city council. So the first time that this will be presented to the council, I believe it's at their, maybe the second meeting of, in January. So the quarterly, our first quarterly report will be for the month of October, November, and this month. And on it, some of the obvious things will be all the development applications that were reviewed and considered, including any special or common or typical conditions made to those. We can talk about the mini-retreat. Of course, the council already has the minutes from that meeting, but we could mention that in the report, as well as the ADU study session. And then, of course, anything else the chair would like to add, observations. This is, this is your report, so staff is really here to assist with that. So I think that is the only city council update that I have for the commission this evening.
Terrific. Thank you. Just on that report, certainly appreciate you guys taking the laboring aura and putting that together, and, and understand this is the first time turning the crank, so this Friday's fine. Does, is there a, a date that the city council has indicated an expectation to receive the report?
I believe that's January 6th, but I can confirm that via email when I get back to my desk. So it won't be due, you know, by the end of this year. It'll be sometime of the first of the, of next year.
Got it. And then...
Well, I'll try to be as thorough as I can.
No, I appreciate, and honestly, I, you know, on reports like that, my, my bias would be, you know, shorter and more impactful versus lengthy and something someone's going to set aside because it looks like too much and they don't want to read it. That's, that's kind of my bias on stuff like that. So, but we did cover a lot of ground in Q4, so there, you know, I think we have plenty to talk about. I'll, I'll look out for that. My instincts, of course, are to involve my fellow commissioners, but I suspect that might be a Brown Act issue if we get this report and then pass it for comment. I don't think we can do that, can we?
No, I'd, I'd want to confirm that with the city attorney, so I'll get some information on that before I send it out, so that if it's appropriate to share with the commission. It is a little, I, I hear your concern and, you know, just wanting to make sure you stay within the, the ground rules or party lines of how we work together. So let me follow up with the city attorney. I think that's a good question.
Yeah, terrific. So that would be the report itself, but commissioners, if there's anything specific you want to make sure is on the report, you know, I think you can certainly, you know, send an email directly to Lisa with, with that thought, and then she can make sure it's part of the report.
If the other commissioners would like to send anything to me, I can certainly receive that. And, and I'm sure that would be fine to send to the chair, and, and so everyone's on the same page. But I'll just, I'll just double-check that process with our city attorney, so everyone is feeling good about the, the way that we're going to do this.
Terrific. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. And, and I guess the other thing, because we, we talked about at the mini-retreat on having that kind of forward visibility on more significant projects we see coming down the pike. So I think it'd be a nice heartbeat, just let's make sure that's in our quarterly report as far out as we know, because I'd imagine the city council would appreciate that visibility as well.
Since we're on this topic of the report, I'll make a pitch if we don't get to give you input. And that would be just a reflection that we all had in a couple of the larger developments, where we had below-market-rate housing, and, you know, we were uncomfortable with the notion that they were ending up as the one-bedroom units. And, you know, in a world where we're trying to encourage families and families with, of, of two-working parents, one-bedroom just doesn't seem right, even in a, in a below-market rate, even in a smaller unit. So to the extent that we, the city council, would think about something in the code that would give us more latitude or give them more latitude, that would be something I would want to flag for them to think about.
Terrific. I appreciate that. And in fact, you know, as you know, I take that, that one pretty seriously. That, that bothered me that evening. And I just, I, I do think that's something we will work on in the coming year. I've, I've discussed that with a couple of the commissioners, I'm sorry, city council members, not all of them, but there's, no one likes that outcome, from what I can gather. So I think that's a good initiative that, that we'll drive next year. And I also, Lisa, I assume we're, we've got some of the ADU incentive thoughts that we were kicking around at, at the mini-retreat. Is that on your list for that report, do you believe?
Yes, we can include that. I think it'll be really important to mention that we had a study session and share some of the comments and requests for additional feedback that the commission shared with staff that evening, which included what you just mentioned.
Terrific. Yeah. And honestly, commissioners, this would be the cleanest time to mention anything else you are thinking about. And, and maybe in future cycles of this, we can have an agenda item for commissioner input on the quarterly report. That'd be a nice agenda item a couple weeks out from when the reports do.
One additional observation I'll, I'll add into the mix. One of the things we've heard from developers in the last quarter is elements of their project that are sustainable materials, or they're thinking about climate sustainability. If it's up in the hills, they're thinking about fire. If it's, if it's in a more urban part of our town, they're thinking about bicycle or pedestrian access. And I've appreciated that staff has called these out in the presentation, and I'd like to see that continue going forward, and, and maybe even linking more specifically to the city's climate action plan. What are the sustainable or the climate sustainable elements in this project? And to... to highlight them for discussion in some way? I think our climate sustainable, climate action plan is being redeveloped this year, and so there's an opportunity to look at what the newer goals are, and to see if projects that are coming before us hold relevant aspects to that in the project, and to highlight it.
Yeah, very good, thank you.
An unrelated note, I'm sure my fellow commissioners will echo this, but wishing staff very good holidays and a very good holiday break.
Anything else on reports, correspondence, general information?
If there are no further things to share, or the planning commission would like to share with staff, I can wrap it up by sharing one additional thing. Very important topic, housing. As some of you know, and I've placed a postcard on each of your areas on the dais, some of you may be aware of, and I sent an email out to the commission beforehand, but we have been hosting, or we had at least one event. We refer to this particular project as Welcome Home San Carlos. This is initiative, kind of directed by the city council, where we are hosting community conversations on housing, to hear from the community, whether they live here or work here, about some of the challenges that they face, or maybe know of others that are facing, whether it's family members, kids, friends, employers, employees in the city that are having a hard time, you know, finding housing to suit their needs at the levels that are affordable, based upon their income. So we had one very successful first conversations with the community that was held on November the 7th. We had over, or about 100 members in attendance. We are going to be continuing and picking up on the conversation and a lot of the information that was shared with staff at a second workshop with the community, and that is going to be held on Saturday, February the 1st. So for anyone that may be watching or listening, what we, what I do want to share is that while this particular event, unlike the other, will be a morning event, so breakfast and coffee and childcare, all of the great amenities that we had before will be provided, and hopefully, the public can, can come out. Again, it's a Saturday, so there might be some, another opportunity if those couldn't make it on an evening night to attend. But also, just as important, we do have a survey on the official website. So this is www.cityofsancarlos.org/welcomehome. And on that official website, there is a survey, and so anyone who would like to fill out that survey, it's anonymous, you don't have to put your name down, but if anybody you know who maybe can't attend and really wants to share their story, that's something that we really are encouraging and promoting. So please do share that with anyone you know. And we just wanted to make sure that we took advantage of the opportunity here tonight to say that publicly, and welcome the public to participate in the survey and/or come to the event. Aside from that, this is our last meeting of the year, so congratulations on another year, reviewing many projects, or wide variety of different projects. And we will be having, kicking off the year with, with a mixed-use project that is scheduled to be on the commission's agenda on January 21st. So just as a reminder, we won't have a meeting on January 6th. Our first meeting of the 2020 calendar year will actually be on a Tuesday night, because of the Monday holiday, so that's Tuesday, January 21st. And on the agenda is a project not too far from City Hall. It'll be at six, it's proposed at 626 Walnut. It's right across the street from the new Wheeler project, Wheeler Plaza project. And this is a proposal for approximately 35 condominium units, with four of those below-market rate, as below-market-rate housing. The applicant is requesting a density bonus and a concession with respect to height. So this will be a lot of different rules and regulations, a project that comes along with a lot of different rules and regulations to consider. But it's a project that staff has been working with the applicant for, for quite some time, and we believe it's now ripe and ready to be presented to the commission for your review. So we will work to get the staff report out to you in a timely fashion. If you have any questions on that, you're always welcome to reach out to myself and the project planner. But that is, I would say, we're starting the year off with, with a, with a very real and important project on some level, because it does, it is providing some affordable housing within it. And again, 35 units, this is a good-sized project. We've seen other projects that are six to nine to seven units, but this one's a little bit bigger than that. So just reminding you, or giving you the heads-up, that that'll be coming forth on January 21st.
Lisa, is there any website that the developer has made for neighbors or even us to take a look at in advance?
I will check with the project planner, and if there is, I'll be sure to pass that along. Okay.
Terrific. And Lisa, I thought I saw something come out of the city about 1.2 million square-foot project office space in the works. Can we just get a brief sense of how quickly that may firm up, and like, at what point that might be before us this, next year?
Absolutely. So the project that you're referring to, or probably heard of, is a proposal that, for a, I think it is about 1.2 or 1.6, I can't remember the exact square footage, million, million square feet of new R and D.
Take a half a million square feet.
Let's just say 1.5 million square feet of new R and D development. This is a proposal by Alexandria Real Estate. They have some history, for anyone who may know of them or follow them, they worked on the Mission Bay project up in San Francisco, which I believe is now complete, the full phase of it. But what they've actually submitted is something that's more conceptual and high-level at this point, in the context of what we refer to as a pre-application. So it's not a formal application, it's a pre-application, but it will be distributed and shared amongst all departments, parks, fire, police, planning, building, engineering, to get some initial feedback and response to. That is typically what happens in a pre-application, where a developer may want to submit information that's more high-level and conceptual, so they can start to understand the direction that the city may ask them to go, whether that's following things related to design, site planning, what to expect, given the proximity to a creek, what type of concerns or requirements they're going to need for the emergency vehicle access and so forth. So at this point, it's a pre-app. This would be circulated to city staff, and city staff would be putting forward a response letter to the development team. And then, once the development team has those responses, they are better equipped to submit a, and I guess with more information about what the city's, what the city's going to ask of them in a formal application. So my understanding is that a formal application could come sometime next year, but I don't think it's going to be any time within the first, you know, it's not like the first quarter or second quarter. I mean, it could come sometime in the summer or fall of next year. I will get more information as far as the timing goes. It was something that was recently submitted, so we're still digesting that and, and taking a look at that. And we recently had a meeting with staff to better understand what was being presented, what their plans are for phasing and that sort of thing. If any of the commissioners are interested, we do have conceptual plans on file, on record, with the planning division, and we'd be happy to set some time aside to kind of share what we've received, if you're interested, and any of you are interested in taking a look. So please reach out if so. Otherwise, at this point, I think the, it's just in terms of how real it is right now, it's a pre-application. So by the time it gets through this process and anything that's submitted, you know, depending upon what the city is asking for and what kind of comments they receive, I mean, it could be a year out before we get anything, and putting together a package like that could take quite some time. So, but we can keep you posted. That's certainly a very significant project in the city, and we do understand and appreciate your early questions, or, you know, any, any questions that you may have. We'd be happy to keep you in the loop and updated along the way.
Terrific, thank you. Yeah, that's, that's a significant one for the city, and kind of echoes the concern of our mayor from earlier in the year. With that, I think we're about ready to wrap up for the year. So yes, I also would like to just thank staff for a great 2019, and all the help and support, and getting us up to speed on everything. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Happy holidays to everyone else. Happy holidays to all of you.
Terrific, appreciate that. Happy holidays, who are adjourned.